I'm going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
President.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have all members present this morning. Our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 20th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the minutes have. All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referrals, petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next are the reports of the standing committees, and the first committee report is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item for, that I will move for approval, and this is regarding city stationery and graphics standards, and I will move this entire item.
Okay. Councilmember Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Nay.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Nay.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and two nays.
That report passes. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 13 items for approval today. A number of the notable items include the final actions that we'll be taking on Mill City Quarter and Abaton, which are the senior housing projects in the Third Ward, as well as item number 13, which is the Target Center renovation project. With that, I'll move items 1 through 13 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Glidden, excuse me, Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to comment briefly on 3, 4, and 5. Items 3 and 4 are somewhat conjoined. This is the Ekumon Mill City and Mill City Quarter projects, and we talk a whole lot about diversity, desegregation, and equity, and I think this project really takes that message to its core. This is growing the city. It's adding affordable housing units in an area that is somewhat of an upper-income area right on the riverfront, and does so in a magnificent fashion with this, what's called a Wunorf path, right down to the river. So I'm really proud to bring this, be able to bring this project forward, and thank you to Councilmember Goodman for all of her work. You know, this is $22 million in tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue bonds, and I think will add quite a bit to the Mill District. And then the item number 5, which is just a passage of a resolution approving operations of extended hours. And, you know, this hasn't gotten a lot of press, nor have many people talked about it, but what we're doing right here is creating a 24-hour city. We're not rolling the sidewalks up at 9:00 PM or even 2:00 AM. We're allowing people to stick around, enjoy the city, eat, soak up some of the alcohol, and then get home safely. So really happy that we're bringing forward both of these.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to comment briefly on item number 3.
3?
Oh, sorry, excuse me, 13.
13. Why don't you go ahead, Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. So I won't be supporting item number 13. I just wanted to mention, again, I've talked about this a bit in Ways and Means Committee, but this is the Target Center renovation deal. It's a $75 million commitment for the city of Minneapolis to renovate the Target Center, not for life-saving reasons, but, you know, to, with the intention of making it a more competitive venue in the hope that we will continue to attract sales tax revenue in the city. And as I said, in Ways and Means, I think that staff and the council members that worked on this did a good deal of negotiating the best possible deal for the city, but I don't support the underlying premise that this should be a priority for public dollars. So thanks for letting me comment.
Any further discussion, then, on the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye on all, except nay on 13.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye on items 1 through 12, nay on item 13.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report, except item number 13, which has 11 ayes and two nays.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward four items for approval. The first is authorizing execution of an amendment to a contract with Next Gen Healthcare Information Systems to purchase three patient portals for school-based clinics. The second is authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Department of Health to address gaps in department plans and response activities related to Ebola virus disease. The third is authorizing an agreement with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization to accept a grant to hire interns to assist in erosion control efforts. And the fourth has to do with the Community Innovation Fund. There are actually two motions coming forward from committee, and I'm going to be moving a substitute to item number 4 that you should have in front of you, which is essentially moving just the A portion of the HE and CE recommendation, which would just recommend approval of the Community Innovation Fund guidelines as proposed and recommended by the Commission. And those guidelines are in your book now, today, at the end of the HECE agenda. So I will move all three of those items with a substitute motion on item number 4.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report with the substitute that's in front of you for item 4. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to clarify with the chair of the committee that this comports with the intentions of the, our advisory commission for neighborhoods?
Yes, this approves their recommendation so that it makes sure that all eligible applicants are one or more recognized neighborhood organizations. Thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion on the Health, Environment, Community Engagement Committee report? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee will be forwarding 15 items for approval today. Items 1, 2, and 3 are reconstruction and roadwork projects on 26th Street East, 28th Street East, Niklet Mall reconstruction, and Minnehaw Avenue street reconstruction projects. And the actions, of course, allow those projects to proceed. The following items refer to Ways and Means Committee. They include resurfacing projects at the listed addresses in item 4. Item 5 is the Minneapolis Refuse Incorporated Contract, and that's allowed an amendment to the contract and extension so we can do our organics collection. Item 6 is the Leakage Assessment Service Contract with Wake's Water Services to conduct those activities. Item 7 is the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge over the Birmingham North and Santafan, North Town Yard, and that's a series of actions to proceed with that project. The item 8 is the 7th Street Transit Advantage Project, and that's authorized an execution of an agreement with the Metro, Metro Council for that activity, and that will be an appropriation to that project of $470,000. Item 9 is a storm sewer cleaning contract with Hight, Ortech Hydro for $2,513.25. Item 10 is the Central Quarter LRT Project Support and Funding Agreement with, again, the Metropolitan Council for a survey of stormwater and sanitary sewer infrastructure to construct along that line. Item 11 is the funding for the Bike Week events to the sum total of $15,000. Item 12 is the Open Streets, approving locations and the budget for the 2015 Open Streets events. Item 13 is an on-street parking mobile payment system, and that's going to be working with Park Mobile LLC to allow us to have on-street parking mobile payment system through mobile devices. Item 14 is the Minneapolis Street Lighting Policy, adopting the 2015 street policy as enumerated in the packet. And then 15 are a series of bids. Most of them are low bids. There's one single bid and one responsive bid. I'll comport with past expenditures. With that, Madam Chair, I move all 15 items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or comment on any of those items? Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on numbers 11 and 12. I've done more work on looking at how we fund these events, both for this year, but also from a policy perspective, how we look to engage partners in the kind of work around education and multimodal transit in the future. There's no substitute motion or addition to a motion that I need for council action, but I do want to just report out, because I've made a lot of commentary on it at TPW and then at Ways and Means, that I do plan on pursuing how we go about looking to engage our partners, fund these programs, choose these routes in the future. So there's no action to take, but I just wanted to comment on those two. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. To elaborate on Councilmember Palmisano's comments, staff is working within that framework to make it a better process for all so we can get the outcomes we desire with our partners moving forward. And they're creating a framework that should serve us well for 2016.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Ways and Means Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means has 17 items for your consideration this morning. The first is a series of three legal settlements. Item number 2 is execution of a contract with Hennepin County Department of Community Corrections for probation officer services. Item number 3 is the increase of contracts that allow closeout final payment for the Visitor Information Center at the Minneapolis Convention Center. Item number 4 are contract extensions and changes with JPMI Construction Company for Fire Station Number 5 and Number 7 Improvement Projects. Item number 5 is an extension of a contract for our merchant services contract. Item number 6 is approving a negotiation and execution of a lease with Flower Exchange for taking up the sixth floor of the Flower Exchange. Item number 7 is a similar action for a 10-year lease with Minneapolis Public Schools for the Hamilton School lease. Item number 8 is the appointments for the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. Item number 9 is the application for a free wireless community account for African Community Senior Center. Item number 10 is the authorizing officials, city officials, to take actions regarding the contract for our emergency response tracking system. Item number 11 is the approval of a termination of a contract with Granicus for our Legislative Information Management System. Item number 12 increases a contract related to the Emergency Operations Fire Training Burn Simulator. 13 is the resolution accepting gifts for staff to attend the Service Knowledge 15 Technology Conference. Items number 14 and 15 are salary adjustments for nonrepresented employees, as well as politically appointed employees. Item 16 and 17 are labor negotiations. These are approval of tentative agreements with the 9/11 Dispatchers Unit and the Laborers Local 363 Unit. Happy to answer any questions on those items. I'd like to move all of those items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Anyone want to pull anything off? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items from the Zoning and Planning Committee today. Item number 1 is denying an appeal related to reasonable accommodation consideration for 2118 Blaisdell Avenue for a supportive housing facility there. Item number 2 is denying an application submitted by the Franklin Bakery for an interim use permit, permit to allow a temporary parking lot for the Franklin Bakery at 1919 10th Avenue South. Item number 3 is to deny an application related to rezoning the property at 1919 10th Avenue South, at the same property, Franklin Bakery. Item number 4 is approving a proposed process for the Art and Public Places 5-Year Capital Plan. This is shifting how we program public art to be more consistent with the rest of our capital programming. And item number 5 is amending our zoning code to allow for more flexibility in how we regulate household refuse containers, because with our addition of recycling and compost pickup, people were getting tickets for their bins. I will move items 1, 4, and 5, and then I wanted to handle 2 and 3 separately.
Councilmember Bender has moved items 1, 4, and 5 on the Zoning and Planning Committee Report. Anyone want to discuss either of those, any of those items? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll on items 1, 4, and 5.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That, those items are adopted. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. For items number 2 and 3, I'm going to move to postpone these two items one cycle back to the city council. We had some good discussion about this at Zoning and Planning Committee, and, you know, I can answer any questions that people might have about this, but basically, there were some process concerns related to how this came forward. But now, we have a vacant lot that can either be used for a parking lot, or we're not sure what would happen if it was not able to be used for a parking lot. So I think there may be some possibility for us, with Councilmember Worsami's leadership, to get to a better solution here, and so I think we, this postponement will allow that conversation to happen.
So Councilmember Bender has moved to postpone items 2 and 3. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I also serve on the committee and concur with Councilmember Bender's recommendation to postpone. Some might wonder why we're not sending it back to committee. We're not sending it back to committee because we're going to be asking the applicant in two weeks to provide a greening plan for 20% of the entire area, the lot where the home was demolished, as well as their original lot. So this will be very cut and dry. Either they will provide to us a plan within two weeks of how they will green the entire lot, or we'll move forward with the action in front of us. So it doesn't need to go back to committee, because we're not going to be debating whether or not there's an evergreen versus a birch tree there, or whether or not 20% is really 15%. They have an opportunity to, to green up their entire space. That's, that's the reprieve that they're getting today. If they're unable to achieve that goal, then we'll move back to the original action. So I would ask those who don't want to hear this again to just indulge us, that we, we promise there won't be a debate. It will either be cut and dry, they achieve it, or they don't.
Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would like to first of all thank Chair Bender and Lisa Goodman, Councilmember Goodman, for the work that they've done on this as well. And like, like Councilmember Goodman said, they have a two-week opportunity to make sure that, you know, the greening plan is brought before us. And we're also going to bring in the Franklin Bakery management, as well as the residents of the area, in order to incorporate the residents' concerns into the plan as well. So thank you very much.
Any further discussion on items 2 and 3, which is a motion to postpone? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That item is, those items are postponed. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar. And the first item on the calendar is an ordinance introduction by Councilmember Gordon to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to liquor and beer for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, amending regulations related to outdoor areas on licensed establishments. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice. Councilmember Quincy moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to Minneapolis cable communications franchises for first reading and referral to the Ways and Means Committee, amending Appendix H by adding a new chapter to granting a cable franchise to CenturyLink. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice, motion by Councilmember Gordon and Yang to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to offenses miscellaneous in general for first reading and referral to the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee for a public hearing to be held May 6, 2015, repealing Section 385.80 related to lurking. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I want to be recorded as voting no on that. Next, we have a ordinance introduction pursuant to notice, motion by Councilmember Gordon and Yang to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to health and sanitation in general for first reading for the Public Safety and Civil Rights and Emergency Management Committee for a public hearing to be held May 6, 2015, repealing Section 213.30 relating to spitting, depositing tobacco. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction. Unanimous consent is required on this. There was no prior notice. Motion by Councilmember Palmisano to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to streets and sidewalks by adding a new chapter, 428, to be entitled 50th and France Commercial Special Services District for first reading and referral to the Transportation and Public Works Committee establishing a 50th and France Special Service District. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction, which requires unanimous consent? All in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have, under General Resolutions, the Resolution about Travel, which was noticed to the public, to us, through work from the mayor's office in the city council about travel to Indiana. And the original motion that's in your books is going to be, I'm going to move a substitute, which is in front of you as a substitute. And I'm going to ask Ms. Segal to explain why we're going to this substitute. Ms. Segal?
Madam Chair, yes. Yesterday, both in the state of Indiana and the state of Arkansas, their legislators and their governors signed into law amendments to these religious freedom, so-called religious freedom statutes that they had passed. In Indiana, the amendment, they added a new chapter to their law which specifically provides that the law cannot be used to authorize a provider to refuse to offer or provide services, facilities, use of public accommodations, goods, employment, or housing to any member of the general public on the basis of race, color, religion, ancestry, age, national origin, sexual orientation, or gender identity. And with this addition to the law, I think that it largely corrects the concerns and objections that have been raised nationally. There still is not affirmative protections in Indiana law, but, but that's the situation that was before they passed this statute. In Arkansas, they amended it by changing their statute so that it is virtually identical to existing federal law. And so I think these, these changes, because of the activism of people across the nation, including the city of Minneapolis and our mayor and city council, have, have made a quick impact, and therefore, I think the situation has significantly changed.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. So in front of you is Resolution 2015R, and it is labeled the substitute resolution. So I will move this. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval. Oh, I'm sorry, mayor, mayor, Madam Mayor, sorry, I didn't see you.
Madam President, first, I just wanted to say thank you to you and to the city council for taking this up. I know we had conversations before I made my statement, and I just appreciate the care and diligence here. What people around the country and what we're doing here has made a difference, not just in Indiana, but in other states as well. I think if you asked the governor of Arkansas whether it mattered that people protested what happened in Indiana, he would, in an honest moment, say, yes, it did make a difference. Things are still not where we would want them to be in Indiana. I appreciate, and other states around the country. And I appreciate that this resolution addresses that and, and makes that statement clearly, while understanding that Indiana, at least now, is positioned similarly to other states in the country, positioned similarly to other states in the country, all of whom we want to proactively support LGBT people. So thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next is an honorary resolution honoring Eric Hansen for his 12 years of service to the city of Minneapolis. And I will just take this opportunity, he's my constituent. And I'm just delighted, I shouldn't say I'm delighted, I'm unhappy that he left the city of Minneapolis, but I'm delighted that he's going to be the Community Development Director for Brooklyn Park. So wish him well in his career, and the city was very, very well-served by Eric's time here. So on that honorary resolution, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Opposed, that carries. Next we have announcements. Any announcements? Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to acknowledge the community members who are here today, who have come to City Hall to help us continue the conversation around workers' rights issues, which include a minimum wage increase at the city level, fair scheduling, paid sick and safe, as well as wage theft. And I wanted to bring to your attention that on April 15, from 4:30 to 6, there will be an event, a rally and a march for $15 an hour in union rights. So I hope to see many councilmembers there to continue to learn about the issue, hear from workers who are impacted by this very unfair sort of workers' rights situation. So I hope that many of you will be there too, and thank you for coming to City Hall today.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Many of you already know that recently northeast Minneapolis was rated as not just the best arts district in the city or the state, but in the entire country, which I think is a tremendous honor. I know Councilmember Reich is equally proud as I am, as I hope everyone else is as well. It really is a wonderful showcase for our city and for the creative class that we have in abundance.
Councilmember Reich.
I'll echo Councilmember Frye's commentary. It is a great, indeed, honor. Not only does the art district have the goods to be recognized as such, it has the people that made it so, and it's a real celebration of the people who have united over the last 20 years to make something very special and very grassroots, and it's just nice to get that recognition at a national level. But I also would like to announce, Madam President, that April 12 is another point of pride for the East Side, where we host the Hot Dish Revolution, which is our 10th annual cook-off, where we challenge ourselves in the East Side, invite others to come with their hot dish recipes. There are several categories, and that'll be April 12, 2015, and this will also include a series of local brews for people to try from the East Side, and for those who are not into hot dish, there is a Jell-O competition as well.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn to be in order?
Second.
All in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.